Okay, so for our public, if you could begin to assemble, we will start in one minute. Sorry for being a couple of minutes late. Okay, it is 7:03 and we are now in session. Today is Monday, October 20th, 2025. Please rise if you are able to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please take our role? And just as a reminder to council members during the roll call process, you will need to punch into your microphone directly to turn your microphone on.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember Azevedo. Present, thank you. Councilmember Bolt.
Present.
Councilmember Simon.
Present.
Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowen.
Present.
And Mayor Gonzalez.
Present. So we've received a request to reorder tonight's agenda to hear item 9B before 9A. Our presenter is calling in from the East Coast, so as a courtesy to the individual, is there any concerns? Seeing none, we will make that modification to our agenda. The City of San Leandro conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 enter the California Fair Employment and Housing Act. California penal code sections 403 or 415 are per se disruptive to meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with your announcement?
If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to make a public comment via Zoom, use the raise hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment period, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once the public comment period is opened, hands may be raised to speak. There will be a 30-minute public comment period, which takes place under item 7, Public Comments, as per the published agenda. After this time is up, the council will proceed with the rest of the meeting's agenda. If you have not had the opportunity to speak during the initial 30-minute period, there will be another chance to do so after item 12, City Council Reports.
At this point in time, we will move to Agenda Item Number Three. Is there a report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the item of 3B, the council voted by, motion by Vice Mayor Bowen, seconded by Councilmember Viveros Walton, unanimous vote to enter into the multi-district litigation settlement agreements on all the secondary manufacturer national opioid settlement litigation. And settlement agreements, once they are signed, will be available upon request to the city clerk.
Thank you. Today we have no recognitions specifically, so we'll move to our consent calendar. Does anybody have any item that they would like to pull from the consent calendar? Councilmember Aguilar?
If there's nothing to pull, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Okay. So is there seeing no interest in anything pulled? Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Viveros Walton?
Second.
So we've got a motion by Councilmember Aguilar with a second, and Councilmember Viveros Walton. We will move to public comment on this item at this time.
Mayor, we have not received any in-person comment cards, but there is one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, so we will close public comment in person and we'll move online to receive public comment.
The first speaker is Douglas Spalding. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. What a bold fashion statement up there. It's really nice to look at. I would like to comment on item 5E, the rent registry. I'm very happy it's moving forward. This is the vital information, the data, which was often cited in, as missing in the discussion we had last week, for example. I think it's, you know, an important way to get a grasp on things and promote housing stability. I am slightly concerned that it's being postponed by six months, but if that's the price of getting it right, then, then I can live with it. What we cannot live with, what we cannot tolerate, is housing providers who do not end up registering. So education notification is going to, going to be an important part of this effort, but I, but I am concerned because before the last, the meeting last week, the East Bay Housing Association put out a red alert, which seemed to suggest to landlords, in effect, that they boycott the registry by simply not registering. So that would be a clear violation of the ordinance. And my question is, you know, well, what's enforcement going to look like? What are the consequences if you, if you don't register? The other thing I wanted to say about the registry is, I, I think it's important to register every single unit. The room I rent out at my house, even though that's not, you know, governed by the, the rate thing, the second room I might room in my house, I ADU I might build, a duplex, a single-family home. Maybe we don't need to charge for all those things, but I think it's important to have the data, to have clear data, so we get an idea about our total housing stock. I don't think that runs into the teeth of Costa Hawkins in terms of the rent registry, but I, I'm prepared to be wrong about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, there are no further raised hands on Zoom.
So we will close public comment online. With that, I will come back to city manager and ask the question with respect to enforcement, if there were to be a boycott of our registry, what do we know about, about the regulation, the ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to defer the question to our community development director, Tom Liao.
Perfect, thank you. And then while he's walking up, if there are any other questions that that has raised, are there any of the questions? Because if not, when this is done, we will move to a vote. Okay, so not seeing anything else, but so let's hear from Director Liao.
Hello. Good evening. Okay. So there would be typical enforcement, once we get up and running. Sorry, okay, thank you, thank you. So Mayor, once the program is, you know, when we're more staffed up, and as we've mentioned, there's going to be a transition the first few years as we implement, but yes, ultimately, you know, a couple penalties would be, you know, like citations potentially if people are not. Also, you know, the rent increase would not be effective if they are not registered as well over time. So those are potential consequences, once the, you know, the program is sort of more fully up and running.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, let's move to a vote at this time.
All votes are in. The motion passes unanimously.
At this point in time, we move to item number six on our agenda. Do we have any items to report? Does not appear that way, but I just wanted to confirm. We have nothing. So let's move to public comment on non-agenda items. So this is where we take public comment on items that are not on our agenda. Anybody can come forward and address us on council matters that are not listed on our agenda, but are within our subject matter purview.
Mayor, we've received one comment card, and there are two hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, let's begin with our two hands online, and then we'll come in person.
The first speaker, speaker is Mitch. You can unmute yourself, Mitch.
Hi, everybody. This is Mitch Hydeba, and I am call, I'm calling in, attending, because Tavoris recently reported on an investigation that the council approved $100,000, $150,000 for. It sounded like the investigation has already taken a very long time, I believe longer than the amount of time it took to investigate the former city manager's complaints. And I would like to know how long it will be before the investigation is complete. And I also would like to request that the investigation report include information on anyone who has either delayed or made this investigation difficult or slower than necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Douglas Spalding.
There we go. Hello again. Well, I wanted to follow up my previous comments by discussing the whole set of housing protections. I, you know, I, we've had a lot of discussions, and, and I have to say, I, I've learned from, from every discussion I, I've listened to. You know, often my ideas get reinforced, but sometimes my mind changes. And I appreciate all the council members' attention to the detail and the, the listening stance you adopted and your willingness to evolve your thinking. It seems like a clear majority position emerged at the meeting last, that last, last week. I, I know that wasn't the mayor's position exactly, but, but it seems very, very positive. There is one argument that's bugging me, and that's the one about the law of supply and demand. And I think everybody, you know, knows that, you know, it makes elementary economic sense that if we increase the supply of housing, then the cost of rents will go down, but, you know, rarely does the housing market conform to that kind of simple behavior. Rents just kind of increase, kind of like the value of housing increases. So I think at best we can say more housing moderates the amount of rate increase. But this argument that rent control will necessarily lead to a decrease in construction and then rents will increase, you know, it's kind of complex and it doesn't, doesn't really pan out. Housing construction, I think, is not some panacea that's going to lead us out of, you know, the housing problem. Of course, housing stock is an important part of the answer, but, you know, San Leandro has built and has a lot of affordable housing. We have a nice unit on San Trocayón, but hasn't filled up, so it doesn't seem like that's exactly the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mayor, that concludes the raised hands on Zoom.
So we will close public comment online and we will open public comment in person.
The first speaker is Mads Juul.
My name is Mads. I've, my family's lived in San Leandro for 100 years, and I myself have lived the majority of 67 years here, worked for the City of San Leandro, was a building maintenance firefighter, police explorer, you know, three generations of San Leandro high graduates. And my neighbors have come here complaining about me, you know, I, about my lights and my cameras and blah, blah, blah. I've, I spoke with Mayor Gonzalez a month ago. We talked for like an hour on the phone and, anyway, I just wanted to share my side of the story, you know, just briefly, you know, like, the police advised me to get cameras, they advised me to get lights, and I'm working now directly with Chief Building Official, Mike Jeffrey, and I've toned down my lights, I've toned down my cameras, you know, I still have cameras, I still have lights, I installed infrared lights. Now, I can see everything, but nobody knows I have lights on, you know, it's kind of cool, but, you know, anyway, I, I, you know, I, I was in my backyard over Friday night, and I got home at 10:30, and I had to turn on my white lights so I could clean up after my dog, so there was no smell in the morning. And my ne, my neighbor who comes here complaining about me comes out there and starts taking pictures of me from his porch while I'm in my private backyard, you know, and I had to have the lights on to pick up the dog, anyway. And, and so anyway, and then the next, I told Mike about that, Mike, and then the next day, I'm in my backyard watching something on TV, and I have a tiki torch lit, you know, to cut down on the bugs, one, two tiki torches, you know, and, and so my neighbor comes down to the porch, starts videoing me in my backyard, in my private backyard. And anyway, I just wanted to share that out loud, like, hey, you know, what comes around goes around, you know, you know, and thank you for your time.
Mayor, that is the only speaker card we have received.
Okay, so we will close public comment at this time. We don't have a public hearing, and the presentations, as we mentioned before, have been reordered, so we will take the presentation on the National Incident-Based Reporting System implementation here in San Leandro. I believe the person introducing this item, at least initially, is Acting Chief Torres, and then I believe that you will introduce our consultant.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, city manager, members of the public. My name is Luis Torres, Assistant Police Chief. This evening, we'll be doing a presentation on the new reporting system of NIBRs, as the, as the mayor mentioned. The individual doing the presentation is Ed Cloughton from PRI. It's a consulting firm that we got in contact with several years ago to help us through this transition, and more recently, they were able to assist us in actually converting our, our stats into, into NIBRs. There was a holdup that he will explain regarding the reporting system that had to do with our current CAT RMS vendor, but if you give me about 30 seconds here, I'll queue it up. And with that, Ed, I will turn it over to you, and I will be moving your slide deck for you.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And then can you see the slide deck on your end?
I do not. There we go. All right. Well, like you said, I'm Ed Cloughton, good to meet you all, good evening. I was, me and my firm were hired, as he mentioned, as the chief mentioned, by the police department a couple of years ago to assist with the department's transition to this new national incident-based reporting system. And so I'm going to be, be very short and brief for you, and then, of course, if you have any questions towards the end, don't hesitate to ask anything. So we can go to the first slide there if you want. And then pull, okay. All right, so historically, law enforcement agencies across the country had to follow a, a federal standard to report their crime statistics ultimately to the FBI. And so it was called the Uniform Crime Reporting Program. It was built back in the 1920s by the FBI, and the simple purpose of that was to be able to collect crime statistics from all agencies across the United States. And the FBI would collect that data and ultimately publish out an annual report about the volume and, and rates or types of crime across the United States. In the 1980s, they updated those federal reporting standards to include a much broader set of crime types that were to be recorded. And that new standard was called NIBRs, the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And in the 80s, it was a voluntary transition. And about 30% of the agencies across America switched over voluntarily to these new set of reporting standards. Then in about 2020 to 21, 2021 timeframe, the FBI announced that they were going to be sunsetting the old uniform crime reporting standards and making all agencies across the country transition to this new standard. And that's, that's what I'm going to describe to you very briefly today. I'm going to give you an overview of the, of the NIBR system itself, and then, of course, where we stand at the police department as far as their transition to this program goes. So our firm, PRI, just to give you a little bit of background and my, and my background experience as well, I retired from law enforcement in 2014, and much of my career was spent around crime reporting, records management and data, data management. So that's how I kind of got into this line of work. And then after retiring, got into management consulting. And so PRI handles, provides these kinds of services for departments all across the country. We've been doing it for about 15 years or so, and that's just a little bit of background on, on us. So again, in 2021, this new standard was rolled out across the country, and in a nutshell, it is a set of reporting standards, meaning in simplest terms, when an officer fills out a police report, the software that they use has to capture a variety of different pieces of data about the incident that they're writing up. And all that data gets input into a database, into the Department's Records Management System. And in that report, the statistics around that event are captured, you know, the crime type, the, the circumstances, the modus operandi, the victim's information as far as, you know, were they related to the suspect and the location type of the crime? And there's all these different types of data points that get collected for every single report that gets written for a criminal incident that's, that has to be reported to these, to this program. And each month, the police department has to send a report, a summary report, if you will, to California DOJ with all of the crime data from that particular month, and then the DOJ sends that data off to the FBI. And then the FBI cat gathers all that data from around the country and then publishes crime data out to the general public. So when you see on the news, or you look up perhaps on the FBI's website, or maybe even DOJ's website, or different states' law enforcement agencies' websites, when they publish public information about crime data, it's based upon these standards. Now, the big difference between the old UCR reporting system and the new NIBR system is that, and you can get advanced to the next slide there, sir, if you want. The old system captured only eight crime categories, different crime types, and I'll show you what those are in just a minute. So it was a very limited set of data about all the crime that occurs. It did not give you the full picture. And so if you ever hear about NIBRs being more accurate, understand that that accuracy means, not that the data was inaccurate before, it just means that it's a more comprehensive view of crime that's occurring in, in any given jurisdiction, because you're getting a much broader data set. NIBRs captures data on up to 52 different crimes versus the eight different crimes. So what you're getting is public crime data that is much more comprehensive. Okay, that's the big difference. And it, and the, the other big change you should be aware of is the counting methodology. Under the old UCR program that was originally built, like I said, back in the 20s, all they wanted to know through this program was what was the most serious crime that was occurring in any jurisdiction. So meaning if you had an incident involving two or three or four different crimes under the old UCR program, only the most serious offense in that incident would get counted, because that's all they wanted to know. They only wanted to know the most, most serious type of crime. Well, now under NIBRs, if you have an incident involving two, three, or four different offenses that your suspect commits, all of those offenses are going to get counted. Okay? So that, that's called a hierarchy rule. The old UCR program is based on this hierarchy rule, that only counted the, the most serious one. So now under NIBRs, when we talk about accuracy, that's what you're getting is you're, it's, it's you're getting much more comprehensive accounting of, of the different types of crimes that, that are being committed. We can go to the next slide. To give you a little bit of an example here, now under NIBRs, if you had an incident, as you see on the slide there, where suspect happened to commit three different crimes in one incident, they did a murder, they did a rape, and they did a robbery, all three of those crimes are going to be captured statistically speaking in the NIBR's data, in the NIBR's report. Under the old UCR system, only the night, only the murder would get statted, if you will. What we mean by that language is, it, all we're talking about is the data that gets reported out to, to the state and then, and to the FBI. Now, the data still exists, the, the department still captures all that information. When an officer responds to that call and, and they investigate the call, they're going to write up a police report with all of those offenses on it. But under the old system, only that murder would get counted and reported out to the public's, you know, public database for NIBRs. Okay? Now all of them get counted. This is a, this is a chart that I, I don't want to get down too far into the weeds with you, because it can be a little bit complicated, but murder, if you see the, the rows in blue there where it says murder, and then it goes off to the right, manslaughter, ag assault, and so forth, and then there's this off to the right, manslaughter, ag assault, so forth, and then there's the second section there, funneling, robbery, simple assault, those are what you call your primary offenses. There are some situations, even under NIBRs, where the secondary or third offense will not get statted in the NIBRs dataset simply by, by virtue of the definitions of these crimes according to NIBRs. It's a very sort of a technical, complex issue. But the, the, the point that I think is important for, you know, electors to understand is that even under NIBRs, the data that is public, is published through the NIBRs program may be different than what we would call raw data. And raw data is the actual raw statistics that come from an officer's report regardless of these reporting rules. So you can have local agency data and that data system that the department uses, their records management system, that is different than what gets reported out to the public. These are the crimes that get counted under the old program you see there. It's just a, a small list, eight crimes. And then under NIBRs, obviously, there's, there's a lot more, a lot more types of crimes. You're getting data now on frauds and narcotics offenses, a, a variety of different things. You're getting much more comprehensive public dataset about crime. So I do want to mention, this is a good thing for every jurisdiction. I, I believe in it because of that more comprehensive picture it provides. An additional benefit is that the software system that the department uses, and this goes for any agency, but the department, your police department uses, I believe, a Tyler system is what it's called, which by the way, I know that San Leandro PD had some challenges with the Tyler vendor. And just on a side note, they're not alone. Many of our customers we've worked with have experienced delays from that particular company in this transition. And, and what I mean by that is that software vendor has to recode the software in the soft, in the, in the records database to make it compliant and compatible with these new crime reporting standards. It's a retool, it's a complete retool of the software code itself. And this company is, is pretty well-known for having problems doing that for a lot of their customers. And they're not the only one. I don't want to pick on them necessarily, but they are known, known for that. But, but one of the advantages is that the system does provide additional checks and balances in terms of producing quality data. And it has some checks built into it that will catch any errors or data that might be missing will be caught better now under, under NIBRs. And then lastly, I see my, my time is up, just one or two more comments. There's a common misconception that when an agency switch, switches to NIBRs, it's going to look like crime is going up. And it, that's not what, what's happening. What, what's happening is you're getting more data. You're getting more statistics about more types of crime. So it looks like, you know, a bigger volume of crime, but it's, it's not an increase in the actual rate of crime. And, and that goes for any jurisdiction. So it's a good thing. You're, you're also able to work with other agencies in any jurisdiction, partnering agencies that are attacking crime trends or crime problems can do so, I think, more effectively, because they're all, they're all now based upon the same data standards. So your partner agency next door, or this county over here, or this police department over here, when, when they collectively are evaluating regionally what a crime, what the crime rate is or what the problems are, they're all looking at the same data sets or date, same data standards. So you have a lot of parity between, you know, in, in terms of the ability to go after problems based upon standardized data across jurisdictions. So that's a good thing. I think that's it. Is there one more slide? No, that's it. That's just the references. So hopefully that makes sense. I know it's short. It's just a very high-level overview. We provided training to the police department to help them make the transition. We gave them a custom report writing manual to help the officers make the transition, did a lot of training for them. And so that's where we are. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. We'll turn to council, see if there are any questions at this time, and if not, we'll go to public comment. Councilmember Vortis Walton, please.
Thank you. The slide represents improved, one of the pros of using NIMBR, NIBRS is that it would improve data on criminality. And for context, criminality is a tendency or predisposition to commit crimes. And I'm interested in, I'm interested in understanding that a little bit more. I believe it was one of the first, first three slides. It improves data. Yep, there it is.
Are you seeing my screen?
We're on slide two, bullet number three. And I'm interested in understanding, how does NIBRS improve data on criminality?
Okay, I see. NIBRs provides improved data on crime and criminality. That's because of the 52 versus eight different crime types that you're able to measure. So there's a lot of different crimes. I mean, really technically, there's California, most states have at least four to 5,000 different criminal statutes on the books. That's a lot of different crime types. So you're moving from being able to look at, at a state, a local state and a national level, 52 different crime types as across, as opposed to eight. Under the old UCR program, when you looked at the data, you, you didn't see-
I'm sorry, interrupt. I have a very limited amount of time that I have for questions. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I really do want to get into the, I understand that more, more types of crimes will be reported, but it, my understanding is that criminality is a tendency or predisposition to commit a crime, which is what was on the slide. But if we can, if you want to get into it a little later, we can also follow up in that way.
Okay. Whatever you prefer.
So other than more types of crime are being reported, but nothing specific on criminality?
Criminality, as we're using it on this slide, is, is intended to suggest that you're able to see the occurrence of crime, which is called criminality. What is the occurrence of crime on a broader scale?
Okay. Thank you. So we, we have a different definition. That's helpful. I'm interested in kind of how that will land. So it sounds like one of the caveats of using this new system is that we won't be able to use previous benchmark years, because we'll have just a lot of more different types of data being reported. I guess an unintended consequence could be that there is, one, a perception of an increase of crime in a city? And how are we building some containers and guardrails around that so that we actually know? Or that, how is that data going to be visualized or explained or released to the public in a way that it's almost like when you get to chasing a car down the street because it's a stolen vehicle, odds are you broke three other laws to get to that point, right? But how, how does that look like from a public-facing interface to, to ensure that we know that it was one person committing various things so that it, it doesn't seem like there's three, four people? How, how does this new dataset control for that?
That's a good question. Very good question. I think it's messaging at the end of the day. There's going to have to be quite a bit of messaging that would come out from the police department. The best way, frankly, is, I mean, you have different channels to do that, but one is obviously a page on the website. And, and there is actually a media toolkit that was put out by the FBI to help with that. They have a, it's almost like a marketing kit, if you will, for law enforcement agencies to use to explain that very question and others that they can, they can use for presentations, from handouts, from language that, you know, you can put on the website and that kind of thing, community meetings.
Thank you.
If that-
Thank you. And locally, Acting Chief Torres, how would that look like if we were to, you know, we have a public-facing portal that takes data and kind of reports it out? How would that change based on us transitioning to a new system?
So we are currently working on updating our, our portal to account for some of these, some of these changes. It's still a work in process internally. But when it comes to pulling the, the data, it is going to be a kind of a manual process. So it's going to be working with staff as well to kind of see what the most efficient way to do that's going to be.
Okay. I have one more question, Mayor. I don't know if you want to get to another one of my colleagues.
Proceed.
Thank you. I just have one more question. And I, I know that the presenter gave us a caveat that the, that the slide with the table was, you know, don't get too in the weeds, but I kind of do. Can we get to that slide? I believe it is slide six. I'm a little confused, slide six. Yes. So maybe this is where we have different understandings of how the term mutually exclusive applies to this slice of the universe versus what I know to be true about mutually exclusive. So just for context, mutually exclusive means that two things can't happen at once, meaning if you flip a coin, you can't have both heads or tails, right? It's one or the other. You can't have both.
Correct.
I, I, I don't, I guess I'm not understanding how that concept applies to this, this, this table.
Okay. I think the best way for me to, to kind of draw that out is give an example using the first column there, which is murder. So murder is the intentional killing of another person. Negligent manslaughter, if you look down there, right, just one box under that or two boxes under that, next to the mutually, mutually exclusive offense section there, right, says O9B, which is the code for negligent manslaughter. So it does align with your definition or your understanding of that term mutually exclusive, because what this program is saying is if, if somebody dies, you know, unexpectedly, not by natural causes, then they were, you know, either, either it's a murder, which somebody else killed, you know, somebody killed somebody else intentionally, versus negligent manslaughter, is somebody dying through the act of gross negligence, right? They didn't die because somebody intended for that person to die, but they were do, doing something that was grossly negligent that caused it to die. So the reason they're mutually exclusive for this program is because this program says, under our federal reporting standards, you can only have either a murder or negligent manslaughter. Now, what's interesting is, in some states, right, by law, if you, if you go by, by criminal definition according to state statute, you may be able to charge somebody potentially, depending on how that state defines those crimes, with both, with the murder and a negligent manslaughter, depending on how the offense was committed. Again, it all depends on the state, you know, criminal statutes. But in order to create a standardized report, a, a, a reporting standard across the country, this program, to do, to develop a program like this, you have to have reporting rules, standardized reporting rules, that are apart from the unique different criminal definitions state to state in the state law, state statutes. So-
Thank you.
-rules.
Thank you. So if I were to interpret what you just said, so that I can, if I were to get this question, because I, I think there's a lot of advocates in our community that are really interested in data transparency and how those are being interpreted. So if I look at this, the way that I'm understanding it is, you know, you, you kind of start at one, and I'm looking at the murder column, just the first part, not the second blue portion on the bottom, but that part, where previously, you're kind of taking like aggravated assault could include simple assault and intimidation, but negligent manslaughter, and then you kind of dig into what other mutually exclusive offenses would be under negligent manslaughter? And then you take one of those, so you're kind of cascading it to kind of understand how like a lesser offense could also have other lesser offenses?
It's confusing, huh? So the chart, let me first make sure we're on the same page, page with the chart. The offenses in the blue are the primary offenses. And then you go vertically, right? You go underneath and you've got a lesser included and mutual exclusive. The lesser included, what that means is if a murder occurs, if somebody murders somebody as a result of an aggravated assault, the NIBRs program counts that only as a murder. So for example, if I, if I pull out a gun and point it at somebody, that technically is an aggravated assault with a deadly weapon.
Gotcha.
If I, if I pull the trigger and you die, well, now it's a murder. So they're saying you're going to only count it as a murder. You don't really count the ag assault, because that was an included element of the crime of murder. And, and that same concept applies for the ag assault, simple assault, intimidation. So if someone dies as a result of an ag assault, simple assault or intimidation, the only statistic coming out of that incident is just a murder. Now, again, this, the police department will capture all of those crimes in their database, but what gets reported as per the federal requirements is just the primary offense. I hope that helps.
I appreciate the explanation, and I don't have any time to see, but I'll go back to
So what I'd like to do at this time is go to public comment on this item. Who do we have? And then we'll come back for more exploration and digging in. So who do we have, online or in person?
Mayor, we have two hands raised on Zoom and no speaker cards in the room.
Okay, let's begin online. We will open public comment online.
Douglas Spalding, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. I have to admit, I'm a little confused why we're referring to Assistant Police Chief Torres as the acting police chief. Is, is there some news about the, the police chief being on leave that I, that I missed somewhere? I want to applaud our city in a couple of ways. One is that we now have, and have had for a few years, the Community Police Review Board that meets, just a little advertisement, third Wednesday of every month, 6:00 PM, the Sterling Grant Meeting Room, come on down. And one of the things that, that, that committee has been doing is examining data. So this, this, you know, new and improved data is very important. I would say that probably in our city, we're more interested in analyzing things like pretextual stops, which unfortunately disproportionately affect BIPOC versus the triple play of murder, rape and robbery. Thankfully, we don't have too many murders and rapes, so that doesn't happen too much. The second thing I want to applaud is that, you know, with the, the hiring of new statisticians at San Leandro Police Department, they've been able to really clean up the crime statistics page. And, and again, that's important, because, you know, not, not infrequently, people have made claims, like, let's say, a law and order candidate for office, that crime is surging in San Leandro, when, when in fact, the data shows it's not. So I want to appreciate the, the speaker's cautionary note about the appearance of, of NIBRs, you know, when it hits the scene. But, but I want to understand, I guess, when I look at the crime stats page, does that data reflect the raw data that our police department has? Or is it kind of the managed report that goes to NIBRs? Are we still on the UCR thing? Kind of like, where are we in all that? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alvaro Ramos.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. One question that I, that I thought of when I saw this is, where is the white collar crime? So I'm not seeing enough of it in the presentation of the NIBRs database. I am referring to financially motivated, nonviolent or non-directly violent crime committed by individuals, businesses and government professionals. Examples of white collar crimes could be wage theft, bribery, Ponzi schemes, insider trading, labor racketeering, embezzlement, cybercrime, copyright infringement, money laundering. I do acknowledge that I did see identity theft, fraud and forgery were counted as crimes. So I would be concerned if the dataset was designed in a way to bias, with a bias towards working people and poor people. If we're going to insist that people comply by the law, then everyone has to play by the same rules, regardless of what collar you wear. Otherwise, we are locking up the street criminals to make the streets safer for the white collar criminals to run wild and free. And so the average crime analyst would know that the dataset is not representative of the population. All crime should count when it comes to the data. And so my question for council is, will the data put more working people and poor people into prison? My concern is also in increasing the cost burden to taxpayers in paying for prisons. That's it. End comment.
Thank you. Mayor, that's the last speaker on Zoom and we did receive one public comment card in person.
Okay. So we will close public comment online and we will open public comment in person.
The first speaker is Mads Juul.
Thank you.
You got it.
I had to comment on the first. The San Leandro Police Department is doing a great job. The people on the ground, you know, the, the officers, the detectives, the sergeants, the captains are doing a great job. The last real police chief in my opinion, San Leandro had was Robert Joseph Patrick McGinnis, whose name is on the building. Everybody else has been a babysitter since then, in my opinion. And I've followed the police department since I was in junior high. I have the police scanner. I've listened to everything they've done since I was in junior high, up until last week when they went encrypted. But they're doing a great job and, uh, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, this would seem like a waste of money, you know?
Thank you. That's the last speaker card, Mayor.
Okay. So thank you. We'll close public comment, um, in person as well. Did want to clarify some language. So Assistant Chief Torres is acting as chief. The chief is, is currently absent, but he is acting as chief as opposed to acting chief. So there's, it's not immense words. Um, at this point in time, I'll come back to council colleagues for some further discussion or questions. If you have, that's fine. We can continue the dialogue. Okay. Seeing none? I, I have nobody in queue. So Councilman Marvados Welton.
Thank you. As one of our agreements is to take space and make space. Um, I was trying to step back because I took a lot of space at the questioning part. So I'll just end with my comments. Um, so it is, you can see by my line of questioning, um, I'm, I'm concerned about how this can be used to portray a community in a certain light because we're now counting a lot more different crimes. And I think, um, uh, it can confirm certain biases that people have about a community. Um, and, um, I, I have concerns about that. I, and just, you know, in terms of understanding, um, this new data system within where we are, both as a city and as a region and as a country is just, I'm, I'm really concerned about how this can be used to weaponize information and come into communities and portray something that, you know, I think one of the other speakers, one of the public commenters, uh, uh, also highlighted is that it doesn't include a lot of other types of crime that are not necessarily violent, but are crimes and that have, um, and that have implications. Um, so I, I guess one of, so that's the kind of end of my comments. I, I think that overall, I am generally supportive of systems that increase transparency and that allow us to, um, proactively engage with people and with behaviors and understand, um, why those things are happening and be more proactive. So that's my kind of, uh, concern about this. But I, I do have one additional question and it's about the implementation timeline. It looks like this has been in the works for some time now. So this kind of precedes our moment in time right now. This is more, it, it sounds like it's more of like a, a data cleanup tool, better data, more information. Um, I, I do have a question around implementation and kind of where we are now in that implementation cycle.
Uh, so we're, we're fully live with the collection of NIBR's and I believe we went live in April, in April.
Okay. Okay. Um, so how will that look like then? You briefly touched upon, you know, you're looking at the public facing portal of, of kind of combining those two and what that will mean for the public facing, um, data portal. Is there a timing on that or we're still kind of figuring out?
Yeah, we're still, we're still figuring it, uh, out. It's, it's going to be some time. Uh, but when it comes to the data, the comparison, uh, it's, we're not going to be able to compare la- last year's data with this year's data just because of the way that it's being collected. Um, and then the, the manual, uh, it's available manually doing it for our staff is, is going to be very time consuming.
In terms of oversight, um, how can, um, how can, is the police department engaging on kind of a regional to kind of provide suggestions on how to improve the data collection and/or the data reporting? Um, specifically like I'm thinking, one of the public commenters, a couple of things really stuck with me in terms of other types of crime that we might want to include that are important to people. Or the, the, the profile of the crimes, this list might not be fully inclusive of all of them. Um, but what kind of oversight or feedback loop, since we just started, it went live in San Leandro in April, what does that look like for our partners? Like, are we engaging in advocacy and like feedback loops to improve it? Or I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, how do we make it better for it to serve our needs? And how are we advocating for that? Are we doing it as a department, as a region, as a state?
So Ed, are you still there? Because I, I'm going to need your help a little bit here on kind of the collecting piece of it. Because, uh, the, the collecting piece is being drawn from our reports and then done electronically. So that piece for the NIBR's collection isn't done, it's not done manually. It's done based on the reports that are written, uh, how they're written, the crime codes, and then, and then pulled out.
Okay.
So it isn't, uh, you know, we don't have a report back in the old days, reports, you know, written and then somebody's, you know, tallying it. It's all done, um, it's all done electronically, kind of on, on the backend. Uh, but Ed, do you have anything on your end that, uh, for maybe what you've heard on, uh, from all the agencies you've worked with?
So, um, as far as the regional component goes, so everybody, so every department, um, is, is going to be reporting. Most, most of them across the country, um, are already transitioned over. Um, almost all of them in California have as well. So in, in terms of, um, that, that regional reporting, um, everybody in, in California has to report to DOJ and DOJ will collect all that data, uh, you know, from across the state. And also, and I don't know if that answers your question, you feel free to chime in if, if it doesn't. But the, the white collar crimes are, are pretty extensive. Um, I think it would be good for the public to know that, you know, it, it does capture, um, various types of frauds, bribery, extortion, um, blackmail, credit card fraud, wire fraud, which is under this program defined as any kind of fraud that's committed electronically. It's very, it's very broad, uh, illegal betting. Um, so there, there's a, there's a, uh, extensive amount of white collar crime that is, is captured. And there was none before in the old UCR program. So this is a huge step in the right direction as far as that goes.
Have one last question, if I may.
Sure.
I just have one more question. Do we, um, what happens if we do not submit data to NIBRS?
Ed?
I can, yeah, I can answer. So, uh, the, the risk is, um, becoming ineligible for a grant. That's, that's, um, really the, the only bad thing that, that, you know, could, could, could happen as far as there being consequences. When, when an agency applies either for a state or federal grant funding, they often contain qualifiers, uh, conditions that, that say the police department has to be reporting NIBR's. And then the, the grant authority will look at the NIBR's data, um, to confirm that. And if you're not yet reporting or not conforming to these standards, you may either be, uh, ruled out for that grant or, or, you know, perhaps a lesser amount. Uh, the other thing that you might get is you, you would get a, a nasty gram, um, from Cal DOJ and/or the FBI, a written format, you know, warning you that you're, you're out of compliance and you may, you know, suffer those grant consequences.
I understand. Thank you.
So I want to take a moment for executive privilege here. If you can just confirm, Ed, there is no new database, correct? It's the same data.
The database, meaning the software system?
I'm meaning the database, the place where the data is stored, where all crime is recorded. That's not changing in any way. It's the reporting that comes out of the database that's different.
That's correct.
Okay. So there is no change in the data that we're collecting. There's, and I just want to be really, really clear about that because I think there's been a little bit of confusion in word choice. The database is staying unchanged. That data is there. Someone wanted to find this information, they could. The difference is, I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong. What is required to be reported to the FBI is more comprehensive than it was before. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. Same data, we're just reporting more to the government in a standard format.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ed, NIBR's has been around for a long time. This is not, this is not a new system.
That's correct. Nineteen eighties, mid nineteen eighties.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to Councilmember Bolt next.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I, I thought I understood and there was a lot of questions and then I got confused. Do I understand? But one, one thing that was mentioned through the questioning is about the white collar crime. This is something that was not collected before and now is? I thought I heard you say that, but then I heard the mayor say, no, we're collecting the same amount.
So this is the tricky part of, of talking about crime and statistics. It was collected. So the police department, if, if there, if somebody in San Leandro was a victim of any one of those white collar crimes and they called the police, San Leandro PD would respond and take that report and document it. And that data about those crimes is in their database. Previously, under UCR, that was not submitted to the federal government through this federal's reporting standard because they didn't want that data under the old UCRs. It was very limited. I mean, that was, that's the way it was, you know, original, the original program was they wanted to know street crimes. So that's why NIBR's, as I mentioned, I'm an, I'm an advocate for it. Um, somebody finally came along in the eighties and said, you know, we need to be capturing all this stuff. And so now that white collar crime is simply sent to the federal government for their information and their analysis and their publication. But like the mayor mentioned, as far as San Leandro PD goes, they've always captured that information. It's in their system. It's just didn't get sent out to this federal standard, if that makes sense. Does that help? Does that?
It, it, it does. And I'm just going to add this because I'm going to say what everybody's thinking. We all know why it wasn't collected before because it was a white collar crime. And the people who were doing it weren't the ones they were looking for. So the street type crimes is the ones that they were trying to create cases on. And I'll just say what everybody's thinking. Thank you. That's, that's all I got.
I'll go to Vice Mayor next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you for the other questions. Answered a few of it for me. Um, just a quick, quick underst- confirmation and then a quick question. So most, or I, I heard many, all, um, the, um, police departments in California and across the country are transitioning to or use this system?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And so it's not necessarily mandated because we're not required to. But if we were to go for state or federal funds, it's oftentimes most likely part of a qualifier because they need to be able to refer to this data. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we've already begun, SLPD has already begun the transition in engaging with, um, uh, NIBR's. Um, and the role of PRI is to assist with training personnel in it. As part of that training, is there also an effort or a strategy around how to understand and utilize this data? Because now we're categorizing things differently, um, both for prevention, for example, or understanding patterns, um, trends, and then communicating out to the community, what is and is not actually happening? Is that part of the scope of work that you are doing? Or do municipalities or cities departments ask for that?
No, my, my training, uh, that is not in my scope of training. My scope of training is in, uh, is for officers and records management folks, uh, which are the two sort of main entities that really need to be sharp in this stuff. So the officers have to know how to fill out the, these new style of reports and follow these reporting rules when they're drafting a report. And then the records folks who have to, um, make sure the data is collected and submitted properly to, to the state, they have to be trained. And that's, that was my, the scope of my services. Now, San Leandro PD, maybe I would, I would need to turn to, um, to the department to answer that, that part of the question. They may be providing initial training internally. I don't know the answer to that.
So one thing I, I will say, and maybe this will clear things up a little bit. If a report was written back in February, we're doing UCR reports, and that exact same report is written today, there's, there's no change in the level of service or how we investigated that crime. So that doesn't, that doesn't change. Uh, there may be a little bit more paperwork now for the, for the officers. Uh, but as far as day to day to the community, uh, if it was a crime back in February, it's still a crime now. So that, that won't change. In regards to the data, uh, the fortunate thing for us is our crime analyst that has been with us for a little over, uh, almost a year, came from an agency at a state that already had NIBR's, uh, reporting. So that's going to be a plus for us because it's, it's as new for us as it is for, uh, many of you. So luckily having that resource internally would definitely help us in, uh, Vice Mayor Bowen's, you know, question there as far as the, uh, what are we going to do with that, with that data? But again, I just want to make it clear that, uh, the crime didn't change. It's, if it was crime then, it's still a crime now.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
At this point in time, we will go to Councilmember Aguilar.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gonzalez, and then thank you for the presentation, Chief Torres, um, Acting Chief Torres. Ed had mentioned with regards to the, you know, the transition, you know, here in San Leandro, we, we want to work harder, not smarter. I mean, we want to work smarter, not harder. Sorry, the other way around. Um, so how is this going to set back staff with regards to undertaking this whole new system and the reporting aspect? Is, do we see any, any hurdles with regards to the reporting aspect, um, being a time consumption? And what does that look like?
I'll turn it over to Sergeant Mund and then potentially Supervisor Carr, who are really the, the leads in this, in this transition for the department, getting it going.
Good evening. Uh, I would say that it, there is an additional workflow that has to go with this. Uh, I think Ed touched on it earlier with our software. The software is not completely tuned for NIBR's, but, um, so there are errors that go through all of this. It has been a, uh, we don't, when the, the reports do get submitted, we run it for checks. I would say on average, probably 25% of the errors, um, do show up, which we have to manually fix each time. So there is additional work that goes with it.
Thank you for confirming that. I just, I just wanted to make sure that where, you know, I think with, with the, you know, with the police department not being fully staffed, I just don't want to, you know, make sure that trying to document what is going on in this process will prevent us from going, going out and, um, solving crime or apprehending, um, somebody who committed a crime. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're working with our community to let them know that we are transitioning to this new, um, software database reporting system to help them understand. Because there can be, you know, they can, they can misinterpret the data in the sense that there may be an increase in, in crime. You know, we, we reported that we're fully staffed with our police department in the sense of like, where we had our marks, which is not true because we're not fully staffed. Um, we still have a lot of work to do in that aspect, but we want to make sure that we're letting the community know what's going on, how we're implementing this and how to interpret that data and what that looks like. And so since we're having to, to go these extra steps and report this, that this increase in crime doesn't necessarily mean that there is a huge increase uptick in crime essentially in San Leandro. It's just this new system that we're utilizing is saying that the statistics are, it could eventually go higher or potentially maybe lower. So I just wanted to make sure that we're working with our community to send out a, I know, some information, working with our PIO officer to, to get that, that information out so that folks are not, um, panicking in that sense that there's a, there's a drastic rise in crime when we're actually, you know, in that sense that there's a, there's a drastic rise in crime when we're actually, you know, utilizing this new technology to help us record these different nuances. But that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any others at this time? Because seeing that, I'm going to dig in a little bit on the apples to oranges risk that exists. And in particular, at page five, there was a statement that it will not be possible to compare, which is clearly true. You can't compare apples to oranges. But I wanted to dig into the reporting because the underlying data is the same. I'm assuming that when we run a script to do the UCR calculations, that we could run that script in 2025 if we wanted to. We wouldn't give it to the FBI, but we would have the results of that output. That's, that's an assumption on my part. So I'm just, I want to check in.
Is that for me?
Repeat the question, Mayor.
Yeah, so the database, the data is the data, right? It just lists whatever the data is. And the way that we pull the data out is we, we write a script, maybe a SQL query or something, that pulls, it tells us how many murders happen, how many robberies happen. And we run that, that script. And we've already, that's already written. That reporting is already written. It can be applied to data that's in the proper format. So if we were to run that report, we literally push go and says, give me a UCR report for 2025. We wouldn't take that report and get it, give it to the FBI. I get it because they want NIBRAS. But we could generate a UCR-based calculations.
I can actually answer that. So with NIBRAS and UCR, the, the crime codes actually changed. Again, there was, I think there was, I can't remember the exact number of crime codes that they classified. So there's robbery, burglary, theft, everything like that. But it, it's expanded under NIBRAS. So when we did the transition into NIBRAS, we actually had to go into each of the statutes and actually change what the, to conform to the new statutes are as well. So running that.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. We have gone into our database and hardcoded changes to the data?
Based on the, to be, to conform to NIBRAS, correct. And it, it's just not the statute itself or the offense itself, just the, the new crime codes that are associated with, with each of these offenses.
So whereas before, and I'm just going to make this up, this is just a way to understand what you're saying. Before a robbery might have been coded 123 as its official code. And today, that same piece of data, that 123 was erased, and now it's called a 456? We've changed the actual data in the underlying database?
Yeah, in terms, it, it has changed. I, I don't believe that we could pull exactly the UCR data just because certain things were condensed or now expanded under NIBRAS.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all that I've got for right now. Thank you for your presentation. And we will move on to item, and thank you for calling in so late. We will now be moving to our next item, which was labeled on the agenda, 9A. This is our update on Quality of Life and Economic Development Council work priority work plans. So who's starting this one? Is it Economic Development? That's Ycinta. Thank you, Director Sintega. Quality of Life. I see the team coming up, so thank you. We'll let you start, and then this moment, we will proceed with you afterwards. The floor is yours.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and community members. Tonight, I'm pleased to share an update on the city's council priority work plans, specifically in the areas of quality of life and economic and development. These priorities were added by the council last year to complement the city's ongoing core priorities of public safety, infrastructure, and housing and homelessness. Over the past several months, staff has been working collaboratively across departments to advance projects that reflect these council priorities. From expanding volunteer and cultural programs to strengthening partnerships and enhancing access to health, recreation, and economic opportunity. The work is well underway. This presentation will provide progress updates on key initiatives, highlighting accomplishments to date, and outlining upcoming milestones. So on the screen now, it's just the timeline on the council priorities. So in May 2023 was the original council priority work plans. That was public safety, infrastructure, housing, and homelessness. Those were developed in May 2023. February 2024, two other priorities were added, economic development and quality of life. In February 2025, there was a council priority setting session. In June 2025, the biannual budget adoption for fiscal year '26 and '27. And in July, there was some priority work plan updates on public safety, infrastructure, housing, and homelessness. So we are going to now start the presentation on fiscal year '25 and '26 on Quality of Life and Economic Development work plans. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Library Director Brian Simons to kick off introducing some of the goals.
Thank you very much. There we are. Good evening, Council. Brian Simons, Library Director. To develop and implement arts grants, the development of a budget and grant-eligible criteria as well as promotion of the grants program are completed and ongoing. And identifying businesses and sponsors for expanded art and grant opportunities is in progress and on track. To expand utilization of art gallery spaces in city facilities and establish partnerships for installations, indoor and outdoor city facilities that could be gallery spaces are being evaluated. Local agencies and artists to submit exhibit proposals are being identified. And public art receptions and gallery tours would follow from those efforts and are consequently on track. To develop programs celebrating community and diverse cultures in San Leandro, an annual calendar of cultural events has been created. And partnerships with local agencies for free programs have been completed. And updating San Leandro History Museum exhibit, People of Many Lands, to represent the diverse backgrounds of current-day San Leandro, has been discontinued. The reason why is we were able to achieve a similar impact with the recent exhibit addition to the museum, the 21st Century San Leandro exhibit, as well as a revamping of the third and fourth grade tours, which is the intended audience age demographic for the museum. To expand utilization of early childhood education programming, a promotion plan of bilingual early childhood programs to target audience, to target the audience, the intended audience, was created and executed. Partnerships with local schools and agencies on educational programming for kindergarten readiness have been established and relationships are ongoing. There we go. Sorry about that. And then expanding participation in the 1,000 Books for a Kindergarten program is on track to exceed total books read and already has more participants than last year in 2024. To expand technology-based adult education programs, the Tech Tutor program was, with structured times for teaching digital literacy skills to adults, has been expanded. Also, an artificial intelligence class series is underway and is well-attended. And lastly, partnerships with organizations to provide IT skills workshops, from everything from your basic skills to new and emerging technology skills are being explored. At this time, I am going to turn it over to my colleagues for the remaining pieces. Thank you.
So goal six was to expand volunteer opportunities for cleaning streets and public spaces citywide. I did want to share on, on the screen, we have some of those deliverables, but I just wanted to give some highlights as well, too. So through this initiative, Beautify San Leandro now has a database of over 600 volunteers. The 2025 dates are on our website and posted to, are available to the public for, to confirm sessions and dates for Beautify dates. And we successfully launched a trash-free initiative through the Sustainability Division. Our next goal was to design and implement a planning initiative to introduce native and drought-tolerant plants across city parks, medians, and public spaces. I did want to share that we have completed and developed a non-functional turf reduction plan for public spaces that includes native and drought-tolerant plant pallets. And we actually had a Beautify event this past Saturday at Hacian to remove non-active turf and replace it with trees and native plants. And we also developed a website that is a resource for the community that has plant pallets that have been identified. And that's under Native Plants page on the Recreation and Parks webpage. Expand citywide tree canopy coverage. So this one is, is, is still in progress. I did want to share, the city secured a $244,000 Extreme Heat and Community Resilience Program Small Planning Grant from the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation in June. So we're working towards implementing a regional approach to tree planting. We've also partnered up with the library, as well as Recreation and Parks, to partner with nonprofits and provide tree education workshops at libraries and community spaces. Strategic placement of litter receptacles to maximize usage and enhance cleanliness. So in partnership with Public Works, we have been able to coordinate waste hauler to install 20 additional litter receptacles in downtown area. And we are continuing to coordinate with SLEA, the San Leandro Improvement Association, to monitor and clean containers and respond to dumping around them. And in, scheduled for the end of 2026, survey, we're going to survey and identify opportunities for sites to add additional receptacles, and that'll be negotiated to the waste hauling contract. The next goal we have set is to establish a private tree protection ordinance. And that is on, in progress. And it's, that is to develop a draft ordinance to protect mature trees on private property. So we're currently reviewing different models. Community engagement will be prioritized in, in that plan. And so we're going to be scheduling public workshop surveys and neighborhood meetings to ensure that the ordinance aligns with community values and priorities. And based on that feedback and public participation, all of that will be phased into the draft, which is scheduled for city council consideration by June 2026. The next one is to develop recreation programs for inclusivity and diverse age groups. I did want to share that, that those have been completed. We've implemented multicultural fitness classes at community centers and parks. And this summer alone, we tripled the registration and attendance of all-age and intergenerational programming from 24 to 25. So a lot of kudos to staff. And we've also developed an intellectual and developmental disabilities database of organizations. So that's been developed, and that's to help us identify potential partners for expanding resources and programming within the city. With that, I'm going to pass it to Human Services Manager, President Natan Ho.
Good evening. I also want to thank you for this opportunity to provide an update regarding our efforts. Regarding our work to partner with local organizations to create accessible and affordable healthy eating options, particularly for low-income families. As you will see from the slide, all three projects in this area have been completed ahead of schedule. There are many highlights, but I want to share a few of them. One of them is that the Human Services Department has partnered with 18 Reasons. 18 Reasons is a local nonprofit organization that.
I think you're going to speak to the next slide, number 12. Is that correct? You're going backwards. There you go.
There we go.
And then do you have like, there you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you for telling me. Yeah, so as, as mentioned, we have completed all the, the, all three activities ahead of schedule. In terms of organizing healthy cooking workshops and collaboration with organizations. They are a local nonprofit that increases food security through food, home cooking programs. And we partnered to provide a very popular program called Cooking Matters. And so I'm happy to report that 30 seniors participated in the Cooking Matters program, which consisted of participating in six cooking classes. So they ended up learning how to cook healthy food, enjoyed healthy food, in company of other seniors. Regarding the next project, which is to identify and allocate funding to support food access programs, $200,000 has been awarded to 11 agencies in calendar year 2025. Just in the first six months of the program, these agencies achieved the following combined. They served a total of 7,269 unduplicated individuals, distributed more than 261,571 pounds of food, distributed more than 42,866 meals, and they provided 52 nutrition education workshops. So I'll go ahead and pass it over to my colleagues for the next project.
Next goal was health, host health and active living events. So I did want to share that we organized, this summer, we rolled out offering free fitness activities at local parks and community centers and was really truly successful, building community. We've also are continuing to collaborate with partners to organize group runs, training sessions, and fitness milestones. And that's going to be led by, that's continued to be led by community instructors in preparation for upcoming events. And we're partnering up with a nonprofit, actually this month, or in November, to host a 5 and 10K at Marina Park. So we're super excited about that. With that, I'm going to pass it back to my colleague.
Regarding our work to partner with local organizations to expand senior services, as you can see from the, from the slide, the technology training workshops for seniors to help them access telehealth services has been completed. Our department, the Human Services Department, partnered with a local nonprofit organization called Tech Exchange, who is dedicated to building digitally proficient communities. I'm happy to report that 20 seniors completed this program. Every participant received a refurbished laptop at the conclusion of the program. Due to the popularity of this program, we actually added another workshop, which, which just started this past Tuesday, October 14th. Regarding the other two projects in this area, they are in progress. So we look forward to providing updates in the future. I will say for now that staff.
I will say for now that staff has coordinated with the Alameda County Public Health Department's Healthy Brands Initiative to provide caregiver trainings to our staff, our community providers, and to caregivers. These trainings started this past Friday, October 17th, and will go through the end of the calendar year. And lastly, you see senior-friendly activities there. We're very lucky to be able to have the partnership of over 25 nonprofits, independent contractors, and volunteers who help us provide an array of services to our seniors.
Apologize for the shuffle. We're all working collaboratively to improve the quality of life in San Leandro. So, last goal, quality of life, was to collaborate with schools for public use of recreation facilities. So, this is in progress. We're currently reviewing and evaluating current joint use agreements, and that's with San Lorenzo Unified School District, as well as San Leandro Unified School District. And that's really to identify expiration dates, access terms, and any gaps in alignment with our recently approved master plan. Currently, the school district is actively issuing permits to organizations for hosting and providing sports leagues and programs. So, again, we're working, as the council member said, we're working smarter, not harder, in making sure we're not duplicating services and competing against each other. And the last piece I wanted to share with that is, we're also currently looking to identify potential community partners, local nonprofit, healthcare providers, and fitness instructors to co-sponsor or staff programs at city facilities, or, excuse me, school district facilities. If it's okay with council, would you like me to go to the next work plan and save the questions at the end?
It would be useful to do both together, and then we'll have plenty of time for a Q and A.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, I'm going to pass it to Katie Bowman to talk about the economic development work plan.
And as a point of order, we have three minutes here. Would you like for me to stay within that timeframe, or if I could, seven minutes?
Okay. We will give you seven minutes and grace.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Katie Bowman, Economic Development Manager. And here, to talk about the economic development work plan that came out of the 2024 Economic Development Strategy that we worked with you, and some of our pillars as we work through all this, to remember the goals are to grow San Leandro's economy, spur new investment and high-quality jobs, with the ultimate goal of improving the quality of life for residents. So, with that, the first goal is to accelerate I'm sorry, I'm not sure what's going on. There we go. Accelerate innovation and growth of target industries. And earlier this year, we completed an innovation action plan to put together a more detailed work plan to help to support and recruit our strategic industries, advanced manufacturing, clean technology, food technology, and biomedical. And so, you will see on here that has been complete, and we've added several new action steps to implement that, and including working on full revamps of our section of the website, outreach materials, as well as working on evaluating and identifying platforms to manage data and contacts, and that will also benefit our retail work. And we also have kicked off and are very excited to kick off the city brand assessment and marketing strategy, and so, actually, working with the city communications team, an RFQ was issued for that last week. Next, to support transformational development. And transformational development, we think about it, it, things like Centro Callan is a great example that encourages additional investment, brings high-quality jobs or amenities, and brings additional city revenue. And so, the first item is to hold a development event, which we just held this morning. We had what we call a development breakfast with members of commercial real estate, retail real estate, and we had 50 to 60 people there and talking about ways that they, too, can invest in San Leandro. And the next item is one that, through a point of order, has been moved over to the housing plan. It's more closely related to do the specific, more specific planning for the Bay Fair area. Next, the greater community development and public works teams, earlier this year, completed ahead of time, a really comprehensive development process evaluation that included stakeholder interviews, a multi-day workshop amongst staff to look at ways and identify ways that we can improve the development review process, which is things coming through the permit counter, whether it's an engineering or community development permit. And so, from that, several new action items are here identified. A lot of them have to do with working on our process and communication, including getting customer interaction and feedback, having more formal development review committee, and working on, as well, improving our Acela online permit system, so that we can continue to stay on top of things. And finally, another major project under the planning umbrella is, they are working, and in the coming months, you will see more, they're working on doing an evaluation of our commercial and industrial zoning and reorganizing and really taking a fresh look at that. So, that's a major undertaking. Next, preserving industrial districts and addressing infrastructure. These items are upcoming and in finding ways to work together to fund services, including a real estate assessment, working with our partners in other departments to look at opportunities for public-private partnerships, as well as evaluating industrial-specific infrastructure, and also, another item that was moved over to housing. Next, creating vibrant gathering places with quality retail dining and hospitality. Our leading framework for that is our retail action plan, which we are putting the finishing touches on, and from that, it will provide a more clear strategy and plan to recruit retailers, help to improve our shopping centers, and really focusing on both the business side, as well as the aesthetic operation side of shopping centers. And several things completed, we did give $180,000 worth of safety and security grants earlier this year, and also have made some updates to make our commercial incentive program more user-friendly and effective. Also, we're busy working on, behind the scenes, on a number of downtown beautification items that you'll be hearing about, including an upcoming augmented reality art or graphic design pieces along walls. And you'll see an item here, prioritized list of placemaking and street scape improvements. That is discontinued based on the direction for the capital improvement plan with, with looking at not adding new projects. And so, with that, we do have projects identified through various studies, such as the Bay Fair Studies, and so, if and when funding does become available, we can bring that forward. Next, supporting workforce development. We are finalizing a plan or a strategy for that, and also posting available information about childcare resources, and are currently doing a childcare workshop series. And the final item showing discontinuance is looking at a childcare gap analysis, which was to be part of an overall human services gap analysis, and that, there is not funding for that at this time. And finally, supporting workforce development, excuse me, supporting small businesses. We, we have, we've done an assessment of the variety of small business work that we did with ARPA funding during COVID, and looked at what worked, what didn't, what partners we want to continue to work with. And from that, we've continued great work with the Small Business Development Center, in which they do free small business advising at the Chamber, and we're going to continue to expand that. And also, we've identified that businesses need, in particular, connections to financial resources. And finally, we'll also be working with the planning and engineering and other divisions to continue to update, improve, and translate our materials for better understanding. And with that, I think I'm right under the wire.
Well done. At this point in time, we will go to our council colleagues for questions. We'll then take public comment and then come back for discussion on these items. So, beginning with Councilmember Vivatice Walton.
Thank you for the presentation and for your time. I actually don't have questions, but I am excusing myself. I will be leaving this meeting at this time.
Thank you. So, I will go next to Vice Mayor Bowen.
Thank you, Mayor. A few clarification questions. First, for some of the programs, especially when, I think some of the programming at the library, for example, it says "completed." Does that mean once the program is done, it's not going to be continued, or it's the start of them has been completed, and now there'll be ongoing programming?
Thank you for that question. It, more often than not, it means it's ongoing. So, we've began, we've completed it, but if we didn't hit "complete" ever, because it's ongoing, we'd never be able to say "complete." So, we have started it, it is going to be ongoing for 99% of them.
Okay. And this could be across all of the different programs we have, but the question around funding for the programs, do we have funding for the programs? We currently have the funding for the programs that are in play now, complete, but what does that mean for ongoing?
So, I'll start with City Manager on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your question. So, it all depends on the program, which you probably knew that part of the answer. During the budget process, this last budget process, as the community and council may remember, in June, there were cuts to some types of programs. We'd have to know specifically which one you're referring to to be able to answer if that program was cut. And as we go through this budget process, again, as the council and the community may remember, we are still working on additional reductions in expenditures for the city's operating budget, so that something could be funded today, and then, as we meet with the council over the next six months, that could change. So, it's more a specific question.
Understood, and I think, I mean, I'm just trying to understand and be realistic about it. I will share later in my comments how excited I am about all of this, like quality of life and economic development is my jam, but I also want us to be realistic. And so, when we are, I'm getting amazing feedback about many of the programs that, you know, are listed on the presentation today. Are we giving out feedback surveys at the end of these events, programs, et cetera, so that we can start to collect this data, to understand what is fully being utilized or supported, or what really does seem to improve quality of life, or would be really difficult for the community if we took it away?
Right. I can answer that, at least from the library's perspective. Most of the more special programming, not your regular, like Storytime, Stay and Play, that kind of thing, even, even at those from time to time, though, we do do this as well, but we do have, like, exit surveys. Now, how many people take them, and how many, you know, people we fill them out is, you know, not the largest percentage compared to how many attend. But usually, if it's a very largely attended event, the attendance itself kind of speaks to how important it is for the community.
Also, just to add, as far as the goals related to recreation park, we do survey every activity, rental, all of our service, services do receive a survey afterwards, helps us gauge and get additional feedback on how our service delivery is. And for, for pretty much every single goal that we have, we have metrics and performance indicators to really understand the impact of these things. And I did just want to answer, as well as funding, just to clarify, a lot of the ones related to recreation park align with our Recreation and Parks Master Plan, as well as our Tree Master Plan. So, they're all funneling to the same goals, so that we're consistent on council priorities and also the master plans that we have developed for our specific department as well.
That was going to be my last question around the age-friendly action plan and economic development strategy plan. Are the goals that we're seeing, the numbered, they align, they scaffold back up to the broader goals of these development plans?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that question. I did want to add and add to the other question, if it's okay, regarding the surveys within the Human Services Department. We also conduct post-program surveys, post-event surveys, as you know, primarily to get feedback on satisfaction, also to improve programming for the future, but also to learn if participants are able and willing to access that service at a different site. And so, and so, we do that for that reason. As far as your, your age-friendly question, these are examples of some of the activities in that plan. There's a few dozen activities that fall under six different priority areas, and so, we're working very closely with our staff and our partners to work through as many of those as possible, of course, reassessing, given the budget challenges that we're facing.
And on the economic development side, the six areas of work, the six goals align with the economic development strategy.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll go to Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. My, my question is with regards to the various, you know, cultural programs at the library, and I think, you know, with, with the current climate, with regards to folks being scared of, you know, homeland security and what have you, what are we doing to make sure that we're protecting the folks who are participating in these programs, in particular, those who are, who are undocumented in that sense? Just want to make sure that we're protecting those that are attending the events, and what are we doing to protect those within the LGBTQ community?
So, good question. We, we do what we can, but we can't do a lot. That's the struggle, right? We, but per the guidance of our City Attorney's Office, you know, if there were some type of immigration action going on, we don't interfere, but we also don't aid. So, we, you know, we, I think wise advice to me once was the municipality, or the library, or the city in this case, the city is not in the business of breaking the law, so we have to do our best to walk that fine line and also not break the law in efforts to do what we can to protect, but we can't cross that line. So, it's a fine line we're walking, but we do our best to make sure those who are there and are attending are safe. One of the things that we actively, I guess maybe a good way to answer it is in the negative, what we don't do, we don't ask for immigration status, we don't even ask that for a library card. So, we don't know who is and who isn't. So, if there were someone from a law enforcement agency asking, or someone not from a law enforcement agency, someone more nefarious asking, we can't actually give them that much information to begin with.
Gotcha. I think there was a question asked about, you know, data, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we, that those questions are not asked when we're taking surveys, and that we're, you know, reporting what folks would like to see in the community, and that we're, we're protecting those particular groups. My question with regards to the establish a private tree protection ordinance, I'd like to understand more about this. I know I, you know, I got a jacaranda tree planted in the front of my house, I have an apple tree, I have a maple tree, and like five portocarpus trees, and I think, you know, there's, the mayor may have like 50 or 100 trees on their property, so how does that establish or work with us as, you know, community or residents? What do we, what is this tree protection ordinance for, and how does, I mean, is this transferable? Like, let's say if I sell my property, I'm just trying to understand this tree protection ordinance and how, what'll benefit the city?
So, we adopted a tree master plan this year and beginning of the year, and we've acknowledged that the city does want to plant trees, but it, it's, it's an uphill climb for the city to plant and have to maintain all trees. And one of the strategies in the master plan is really educating the public on the impact and the benefits of trees. And we've also heard from community members about a lot of trees being cut down, mature trees being cut down on private property. So, this is a community effort to, again, increase tree canopy coverage, and that's really what the intent is, how can we increase tree canopy coverage in the city of San Leandro? So, we're exploring a draft ordinance for mature trees on private property. So, there'll be a process if you want to remove those trees, there'll be a process and evaluation to determine if you can remove those trees, but the idea is to really engage the community about the benefits of trees, and also to increase tree canopy coverage. about the benefits of trees and also to increase tree canopy coverage. So this is just another opportunity or strategy for us to protect a lot of these mature trees that we have in San Leandro, because depending on what district you go to, there's more of a tendency, or maybe not enough education on the benefits of trees, so there's a lot of trees that are being cut down, which is also decreasing our tree canopy coverage. And so this is a strategy that the Urban Forests Tree Division is really focused on to increase tree canopy coverage. City of San Leandro has a visionary goal of having the city canopy coverage at 20%. We're currently at 8%, so it takes a village, and these are some strategies to really address that and try to reach that goal.
Gotcha. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the mature trees on private properties. I know that we, we have a, we did, we conducted the study, but I'll ask some more questions later.
Okay. Thank you.
So then coming to Councilmember Bolt.
Yes, thank you all for the presentation and the hard work you're doing. My first one is just a plug for parks and recs, going out there and seeing the different events you're holding and the tree planting. I mean, to me, it's an awesome way to get out, enjoy some fresh air, and the staff that you had available, extremely knowledgeable, all the questions that people were asked, I was in the group, and all the people were asking questions, and it was like, I mean, just on point right away. So that's just a little plug that I wanted to give, because I really, I really did enjoy that, and I think that's great for the community. It gives us more opportunity to get out there and enjoy the parks. Knowing one of the youngsters that was out there that day texted me a couple days later and just, "Hey, our tree still looks good," you know? So I think, I think that's awesome, and it creates a lot of buy-in for the community, so thank you for that. Now, a question about permitting processes and the, the meeting you guys had and, you know, your ideas of looking at fee scheduling, I was hoping maybe came up in the permitting processes for jobs. I know, I believe, most of the council got an email like I did about a company working in the city, replacing water heaters, $650 water heater, but the permit at the city was almost $700 bucks. They're doing what they can to make sure the city, you know, playing by the rules, you know, anything over $500, you got to pull out a permit, but when the job itself is $700 and, and the permit is that much, that just encourages contractors to not pull permits. So the question is, do we, when we're looking at those things, are we looking at overall job costs? Are we only looking at what it entails on the city's end for this permit? And additionally, if we are looking at those costs, are we doing any type of analysis of the neighboring cities and what they may be? Not saying we need to be like them, but, you know, maybe if someone has a $300, you know, some city has a $300 water permit type, and this is, is very specific around a water heater, but the idea is that the answer would, would be an overall kind of answer.
I appreciate that feedback. Earlier, I believe, earlier this year, there was a comprehensive fee, fee study, I forget the title, brought before the council, that was based on working with consultants, based on the different rules that apply to how we set fees. And I, I am not the expert in that, so I don't know, but I think we can provide more information at a later time, and I'll share that feedback as well with, with our team that works.
No problem. I just heard you mention that meeting, and I was like, oh, great, they are looking at this. And it's, it's important for us to make sure that we're doing the right thing and not going overboard. So yes, absolutely, an email later is more than efficient.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
At this point in time, I'll go to Councilmember Simon.
Excellent presentations. Thank you very much. I have a few questions for you. So on the quality of life, you have 15 subcategories. How did you come up with those subcategories? And was there a limit to them? Did you whittle it down from a larger number, or where did these come from?
I can start, and my colleagues can jump in. So in developing the work plan, we were really strategic, and this goes to Councilmember Bowman's question, Bowen's question in regards to strategic plans. So we reviewed all the strategic plans for the departments that had a higher emphasis on strategies surrounding community life. We reviewed the Age Implementation Action Plan, we reviewed the Tree Master Plan, we reviewed the Recreation Parks Master Plan, we reviewed the Library Strategic Plan, and we wanted to ensure that a lot of these deliverables align with quality of life, but also align with strategic plans that the city had recently adopted as well, too. So we wanted to, again, back to Councilmember Aguilar, we wanted to not work harder, but work smarter and ensure that we can sustain these things and that they align with our initiatives and strategic plans. So we had a work session with staff, multiple staff in different departments, where we reviewed plans, drawed out work plans, and how we would implement those. We drawed up 15 goals with three deliverables in each one for consistency. All of the deliverables underneath each goal were really aligned to really address that goal. And so we broke down the goals with actionable items so that we could accomplish those goals. So that was the structure of those goals. And again, it was a planning session with multiple departments. We had feedback on citywide with multiple departments and developing those work plans for the quality of life.
Thank you. I would, I agree 100% with my colleague, that was exactly what we did together collaboratively. I would say maybe the one thing I would add, at least from the library's point of view, is we tried to do some kind of short, mid, and long range, or more long range with the three years represented here, as to things that would take a more limited amount of time, all the way out to a little bit more extended amount of time. We tried to balance some of these, so we didn't just put some really quick wins and only quick wins up there. So that's why you see some of these that aren't yet completed, because we do, we did very strategically have that in mind for some of the more complicated things, or things that we know that would take longer, we didn't want to shy away from that.
Great. Thank you. And looking at your 15 items, I have a few questions on a couple of them, but why I ask that question is, for example, number 15, collaborate with schools for public use of recreational facilities. And I totally agree with that. I've heard that comment before, and the Manor in particular, how the residents would like to use the elementary school's play fields, and I know the city has been coordinating to make that happen, and the residents really appreciate it. But kind of a little bit of a twist on this would be kind of related to something I experienced last week, and I have to give a shout-out to Sheila Marquez and her staff from Engineering. They gave a presentation at the Manor HOA meeting about the Llewellyn Bike Lane Improvement Project. Very nice presentation, very good project, strategic-wide, looking to improve quality of life by allowing people to bike more, slowing down speeds in the street. However, an impact could be increased traffic, certain amount. I think it's the benefits of quality of life, cleaner air, riding bikes outweigh that, but why I'm bringing this up is public schools. Near Llewellyn is Aurora High School, which is San Lorenzo, but it's right next to San Leandro and Llewellyn Boulevard. And after that presentation, and a lot of feedback we had from the residents, and I went out there and saw with my own eyes, is there's a lot of backup from San Lorenzo into San Leandro onto Llewellyn Boulevard. And imagine, and this comment came up, if more kids were encouraged to use bicycles in these public schools. And just kind of thinking of a subset on that theme you have is, I took a little note here, collaborate with schools for more efficient and healthy use of public facilities, roads. So if, and the residents brought this up, if there was grants for bicycles or classes how to ride bicycles, to get these kids out of the cars with their parents, that would free up room on the roads. So if there's any way to explore that, and that came out just of last week from that nice dialogue from Sheila and the community, Sheila's group and the community, I think that would be really helpful. I have some more questions, if I could wait or come back.
Why don't you do one more, and then we'll go on to the next person. We can cycle back to you.
Okay. My next question has to deal with, similar to Councilmember Aguilar's, with the trees, the private tree ordinance, which I am very supportive of, and wholeheartedly, we need more trees in our, to protect our trees in our community, and we all know why. Air quality, bring down the temperatures, all of the above. But my question is, or my questions are, will there be a, I know you're drafting an ordinance now, but will there be some type of inventory? I know it's a big task, as we've heard, people have lots of trees in their yards, but will there be an inventory of trees in people's yards in order for us to track if they are, and I've seen this, mutilating trees, where they just chop it to nothing, or just chop it all the way down?
So part of the Tree Master Plan, the inventory, city trees, we don't have an inventory for private property trees, but that's something we would consider in, while drafting. Part of the whole process with that would also be evaluating the permit process, evaluating our fees and penalties. We understand a one-size-all approach doesn't work, and so we're asking for community engagement. And I did just want to share that part of that initiative in increasing tree canopy coverage. The grant we secured also is really developing a network and resources and community groups to develop an ecosystem of resources as well. And so we're using that planning grant to really make a lot of connections with not only other agencies in, on a regional level, but also community groups. And so, yes, inventory would go there, we would need an inventory on private property, so that, that would be needed, but also best practices and working with other jurisdictions, other cities. We're currently working with the county, we're working with the Hayward Air Recreation Park District, we're working with the City of Hayward, just having a regional approach of how to implement this. And City of Hayward, our neighboring city, recently adopted a tree ordinance as well, and so we're in communications of how the outreach went and strategies that they would like to share with us. And so we're meeting with, with local neighboring cities as well.
That's great. And kind of along those lines of inventory, and this again is resources and dollars, but staff to inspect, or someone to inspect the trees routinely at some interval to see if they are, been damaged, and would there be, are you considering fines if people are damaging their trees or removing them?
Yes, we're going to be evaluating that as well.
Okay. And to follow up on the Hayward, which I'm happy to hear they have an ordinance, even locally within our own community, HOAs such as Heron Bay HOA has a really good tree ordinance to protect their trees there, and so I'd encourage reaching out to them, too. Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll go to Councilmember Esposito.
Thank you all for your presentation. The community's really noticing. Our seniors are happy, they're going to the senior center, they're going to give them brown bags. Our libraries, people are seeing all the events going on are happy, and our parks are great, so thank you for all that. I have a question regarding the city's street sweeping plan. Has the city reviewed that? Because I notice a lot of cars don't move. I know other cities, I brought it up before, a lot of cities enforce it where the cars have to move, where they get a ticket or a warning or something, but you could see on the streets where cars haven't moved in a while, and there's all kinds of garbage and stuff growing. Has the city looked into any of that?
Pass that to our Public Works Director.
And also the signs, we need more signs for it, because nobody knows when the street sweepers, or we can have a schedule put in the San Leandro Times or something, just so when people know when the street sweeping's coming. Go ahead, sorry.
Good evening. Sheila Marquez is Public Works Director. Street sweeping is the responsibility of the Public Works Department, the Maintenance Division. We are reviewing our street sweeping routes. There are certain streets that we cite and request that the vehicles are moved before the street sweepers come through, and then there's some other streets that we have to sweep around the vehicles that are parked there. So we're currently evaluating how to expand those routes a little bit more to make sure our streets are a little bit cleaner, but also we are taking a look at how we can educate the residents more. We do already have those routes on our website, perhaps they're, you know, they're buried a little bit. We may also initiate in some areas, maybe some flyers initially, just to remind businesses and residents.
Okay. Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Coming back to Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. My question is for Katie with regards to economic development. I just had a question with regards to, let's see, it was regards to the hotel study. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong section of the presentation. So it is, evaluate the feasibility of attracting hotel uses and identify opportunity sites. Why do we have this in fiscal year '26, '27, and not towards the, I mean, or have this sooner in the year fiscal '25, '26, or at the end of '26? I mean, the beginning of '26.
So strategically, we're in a really bad period for hotels. So the thought is, A, based on thinking strategically with all of the work, and so we can be queued up to perform it when we start to see signals of the market picking up, but it's not anticipated that, you know, yeah, like I said, it's, there's a lot of challenges in that market right now, and so, yeah, strategically, we plan to dive in further when the market improves some.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. That was my last question.
Thank you. Then I'll come to City Manager for additional, some additional color there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also just a feedback on Manager Bowman's excellent answer. Yes, as we know, the hoteling business is struggling right now, and this is, as you see, when we provide these updates, we like to do them approximately every six months to council, just to see how we, our staff is working on your work plans. And as you see, for example, the item above that has been discontinued, depending on what is going on, you know, in our nation, in our city, in our, in our region, sometimes the timelines may change, or the item may move or be discontinued. This is something that, yes, we are planning this further out when we're hoping that the market changes for hoteling, but as, you know, the months and years progress, we will learn more to know that this, if this is even something that we need to study at that time. So it could change as well if we don't see a change in this market.
Coming back to Councilmember Simon.
One other item on item number seven in the quality of life, design and implement planting initiative for native and drought-tolerant plants across city parks, medians, and public spaces. Again, I highly support this, all of them I do, but this one I wanted to touch on a little bit. I think I might have mentioned it in another council meeting. However, just kind of looking at our neighbors, and kind of like you mentioned, what is Hayward doing with their tree ordinance? And Hisperian Boulevard, and our southern end where it connects into San Lorenzo, and the medians in San Lorenzo going into Hayward are just beautiful. I believe it's part of the recycled water project they have, but you drive under the underpass of 880 into San Leandro, and it's like night and day. I just really would hope that we could partner with them, we could look at our own recycling water, something, but it's such a stark difference from the unincorporated to ours, and I know we're working on it, we're getting there, but I just wanted to bring that again to our attention, and they're right next door, perhaps they have some capacity of the recycled water, they could sit, you know, partner with us on something, but such an amenity we have right next to us, I would love for our community to have that beauty right next door in San Leandro. Thank you.
Okay. At this point in time, we have completed questions. We'll go to public comment. Do we have public comment? Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. We have not received any comment cards for speakers in the room, but we do have two hands raised on Zoom.
Please proceed online.
The first speaker is Douglas Balding.
Ooh, I was looking at that big five minutes, but I guess it's been reduced to two. I wanted to follow up on the discussion that Councilwoman Aguilar raised about, you know, what are we doing, how are we prepared as a city if and when ICE comes to town? And I understand what Mr. Simon was to say about, like, you know, we have to, we have to play the fine line between interfering and protecting people. But, you know, the fine line starts at the door. And so I'm wondering, has the city done any training, not just for library and library staff, but like all of our public spaces, in terms of, one, like, closing the doors and locking the doors? I know it gets a little questionable in terms of the fire department, but like, that's the A number one thing to do to prevent ICE from getting their hands on anybody is close the door. And two, every private place of business and every public institutional space has the ability to define private workspace. And we need to do that so that the, the library staff and other city staff are protected, they have a place to go into that ICE is not permitted to go into. And then, and then the third training point is just, do people understand the difference between a judicial warrant that we have to honor and an administrative warrant, which is the flimsy thing that ICE often goes and flaps around. So many interesting points. I'm happy about the private tree ordinance possibility. I drove by the Hisparian Triangle today after getting my little stitches out, and I'm just wondering what's going on. The art is going down apparently, but the old Art Commission idea about a sculpture park has never been realized. I hope that comes to fruition. Bye.
Thank you. Your time is up. The next speaker is Alvaro Ramos.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to start by making a point about establishing the private tree protection ordinance. I think this is especially a problem for trees on a shared property line. So say you get a tree that is next to a fence between two neighbors. There's a particular issue here of conflict between neighbors, potentially, not in every case, but in some situations. And then it'll go through a lawsuit and legal dispute over tree damage, even though a tree is like a public safety issue, because it's overhanging on someone's house. And then the root system could be breaking up housing infrastructure on private property. So it would be nice if there was a way for neighbors to resolve the issue and prioritize public safety and maintenance. I'm also very curious about the local financing in small business. I think there's part, this is also could be part of a larger issue of unbanked and underbanked people, unbanked people who don't have bank accounts and keep their money in their mattress, and underbanked people who do not have sufficient access to financial services. These are populations that should be addressed as part of a larger issue. I would prioritize credit unions and local financing. The last thing I wish was a goal on this agenda is that, is public health. I wish that we would prioritize vaccinating people. I'm very, what I'm, what honestly it concerns me most right now is that public health is being attacked at Health and Human Services, and then there's cuts to food inspections at the Food and Drug Administration, which I hear about on the news, but you never know how it affects us. And so I think it makes us an unhealthy community, and we don't want another pandemic like we did in 2020. Vaccines have extended our human lifespans, thanks to advancements in modern medicine, and then workers are sick less and are more likely to be productive. So those are ways in which it benefits the quality of life and the economy, and I think how, how it aligns with your goals. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no more speakers.
Okay, so we'll close public comment online. And just to confirm, we still have no cards here, correct, in the room?
That's correct.
So we will close public comment. Coming back to councilmembers for final thoughts, comments. Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. I just wanted to say thank you to Katie, Pedro, Brian, Brian and Mr. Zuniga for your presentation and all of your hard work that you do for the community. It doesn't go unnoticed. We really appreciate your time and effort and moving forward, San Leandro, and all that you do. But thank you so much for your contributions and the presentation, and I can't wait to see where we go next. Thank you.
Councilmember Simon.
I would like to second Councilmember Aguilar's comments. Outstanding work and staff here in the audience, too, and online. And Janelle, your effort of leading the staff, just excellent work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I really appreciate, and it wasn't as clear in the presentation, but so much of what was completed or all the work that you're doing, those are huge wins for the city and for the community. A lot of the emails that I get are emails that are also CC'd with all of you in them and your staff. So thank you so much for being as responsive as you've been to the community, because it's made a huge difference. I think it really shows that we're getting the work done. A few things that I wanted to just mention, whether, and my notes are all scrambled, so some of them are comments, some of them are recommendations or just suggestions. The, there was a goal six around beautification. Is that also part of the Clean California designation, so that we can kind of easily get into, like, to meet those 12 criteria for it? I'm sure it is. I just wanted to highlight that.
So, yeah, just to confirm, we're working collaboratively with the Sustainability Division on some metrics and some reporting as well. And so we're reimagining what the beautify initiative looks like moving forward, and how that could be expanded and pivoted to really be able to capture some additional requirements and future grants. So we're working collaboratively with Public Works, specifically the Sustainability Division.
Fantastic. I was also thinking about all the elementary schools and maybe middle and high school, but for sure, does a school beautification day, and I wonder if there's a way for us to collaborate on that during the same days, to get the whole community out at the same time. That could be really cool. I've gotten lots of emails about tree canopies or trees being cut down, so thank you so much for the work you're doing on that. One of the biggest areas of feedback I got about recreation programming in the past was about gaps in different age groups. So love seeing all the new programming that's out there. I've been thinking a lot about food insecurity and food access, and so all the work that we're doing for that, incredibly important. So thank you so much for that. I want to give a big shout out to the Rucks and Parks Team, too, very recently. Bancroft Elementary, Bancroft Middle School had their cross-country meet at the San Leandro Marina, and there was potentially going to be a hiccup, and you all went like above and beyond to ensure that it could be done. And it was a fantastic event. You know, all the schools come to San Leandro, and it's like this big highlight for them, and we get to show off the marina. And then, you know, library services programming, I literally get screenshots of the programming that you're doing, and people are like, this is amazing. So that's wonderful. And I think staff would laugh at me if I didn't mention childcare in my comments. And so I just want to talk briefly about childcare infrastructure and some of the work that you're doing on that. Really, I saw posts going out about helping folks becoming entrepreneurs, starting childcare centers. Like, that's phenomenal, because it is an economic development issue. One of the things I was thinking about as you're thinking through, like, the needs assessment, is also partnering with businesses that we have in San Leandro, because we have such large businesses as well, like big warehouses and big corporations. But people will stay at work longer and do more work in a city if they're able to be here with their children. And so to be able to partner in that way, so that you're not rushing to get home to Pleasanton or somewhere else, because that's where your kid's childcare is. And in all 50 states still, it does cost more money to send two kids to childcare than pay median rent. And so just want to offer that. But I just really want to give you all amazing kudos and your staff.
Okay, seeing no other comments, I'll round out the comment section. I know in these chambers, we talked about the 1% for the arts ordinance. I just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost. I think we had a commitment, maybe in the, in the July or June meeting about that that would progress within the coming year, coming half year, six months, is what we said. I do want to make sure that we are doing partnering with the adult school programs that exist. I know that we are sensitive to duplicating efforts. I just want to make sure that we're complimentary, that we're not offering the same programming on the same nights, sort of thing. Trash receptacles around the city, clearly some have disappeared. I do know that some trash receptacles seem to be used by residents for their private trash. And so I know that we're trying to be sensitive to placing receptacles strategically, so that they're really meeting the needs of the individuals that are going through the city, walking through our commercial districts and like, and just to help keep things clean. So I can tell that you're being mindful, but I just want to make sure that as we're doing that work, we're purposeful. We have kind of some sort of method, some sort of process, that we can say, yes, we did it this way, and we did it for this reason. I want to thank very much the endless programming that I see at the senior center and at the library. Every time I go, there's programming, all sorts of programming. We've even delved into cyber training, helping keep our elders safe. I know that we had IT Director Siner was a presenter for one of those. And I just think that our commitment is paying dividends. As Councilmember Esposito said, there are many great things happening in this city, specifically when it comes to quality of life. We get lots of emails, we get lots of compliments, we see it directly. So there's many, many good things that are happening. Thank you for your use, your work on joint use agreements. I think that there's, there are significant opportunities there. And to be clear, we may need to spend a little bit of money, but it's going to be a lot cheaper than having our own spaces and coming up with the money to acquire those spaces. I do want to, when it comes to trees, one of the sensitivities that I particularly have is that we see a lot of paving over of front yards. And places where there were trees, the trees get cut down, and then we pave over the front yards. I have been sensitive to this issue since I first arrived, and I want to keep highlighting it. And I will highlight it until the last day I'm here. I do not like to see front yards paved over. And my instinct tells me that we're choosing to look the other way, because that's specifically removing green space. It's specifically increasing stormwater runoff. And, you know, so it's from a city's perspective, from a sustainability perspective, it is a lose-lose to see those front yards being paved over. I do think that, if I'm understanding correctly, when you talked about local financing, this is on the economic development side, I think that that local financing reference was, with respect to helping some small businesses grow, but I just wanted to clarify that, because I believe that's what it was.
Yeah, yeah. So through our evaluation, looking at business needs, had identified access to capital, and is really more what I was meaning. So helping small businesses access financing or capital through community banks, or through what they call CDFIs and things like that. So we're exploring different ways to best, you know, implement that, whether it's workshops or connections, and certainly through the connections that we're making with businesses through the SBDC as well, to continue to keep them engaged.
So thank you for doing that, because I do think that there are many, many resources that are out there. And a lot of times, either the entrepreneurs, the small business owners, or our own residents, they're not aware. And so one of the roles that we play is a connector, a facilitator. And we heard that in today's workshop, where we brought all these developers together over at Gate 510. So, by the way, thank you for that. That was a very high-energy event. And thank you for inviting council to participate. I do think that being responsive, I'm seeing this over and over, whether it's getting some problems solved to make sure that Oktoberfest goes without a glitch, or whether it be the situation over at the marina. This kind of customer service mentality, the meeting people with, they've got a problem, and how can we help them, instead of being the center of no, where let's, okay, let's explore how. And then what I'm also seeing is that we're spending time on the backside, saying, well, where did the process break down? Is there ways that we could have done something differently? And it could be as simple as education, it could be a workflow. And I see that creativity, and I see that energy, and I see that commitment. So I also want to add my thanks, because it's that type of resident-oriented attention that's very important. Because ultimately, on the economic development front, you know, we're not the investors. On the economic development side, it's our job to make it easier for them to operate in our city, so that they do bring high-paying jobs, high-quality jobs. It's also fundamentally, I believe, the purpose of government to improve the quality of life of residents. That is at the core of what government does, making it easier for people to live their lives. And so I'm particularly grateful for all the work that you guys are doing in uplifting the business community and uplifting the residents by providing them more, and oftentimes for the same or even slightly lower budgets. So thank you for doing the magic that you are doing. And so with that, we will close out this item, and we'll move to our one action item that we have today. And I believe it's a relatively short item to address an administrative error. And I believe, if I'm correct, we've got, there you are, Human Resources Director Emily Hung to present this item. Try pushing the button. There you go.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The action item before you is a resolution to amend the master salary schedule to correct an administrative error made on the city manager's salary. So on June 16, this council approved the master salary schedule to reflect salary adjustments that were effective July 1. However, the Human Resources Department made an error and accidentally listed a rate that had been previously forecasted for the former city manager. So I apologize for that error and any confusion that may have caused. In accordance with her employment agreement, city manager Cameron was to receive a 3.5 salary adjustment on July 1, making her annual salary $362,250, which is $30,187.50 per month, which is now reflected in the master salary schedule in the packet. So there's no financial impact with this action, since the salary adjustment was previously approved by the city council and was incorporated into the approved budget. This is solely intended to correct an administrative error on our part and reflect the correct city manager's salary on the master salary schedule. That summarizes my report, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll go to Councilmember Aguilar. Oh, sorry. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Thank you, Emily, for the presentation. I completely understand the oversight. If nobody has any other questions, I'd like to move this item.
Okay. We'll go to Councilmember Bolt. Is that for a question? Please proceed. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Is there any money law, if we did it, has it not taken effect?
We did have to make a correction, and so there was about $281. That was a difference.
And so the city manager received that less? So how do we rectify?
We will make a retroactive correction on her paycheck.
Oh, that sucks. Okay.
She's very forgiving.
Well, that's a bad place to make an error on your boss's check.
Yes, I know.
Thank God you're here to explain it. No, I got no problems. I'll second, you know, I'll second that motion.
Okay. So what we're going to do quickly, if there's, I see nothing else, let's go to public comment on this item, please.
Mayor, we have not received any comment cards, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
We'll close public comment. So what I have in my records is we have a motion from Councilmember Aguilar, with a second from Councilmember Bolt to adopt the recommendation to adjust the salary schedule. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes are in. The motion passes 601, with Councilmember Viveros Walton being absent.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll go to, to
Okay, at this point in time, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 11. We don't have any items that have been submitted, if I'm not mistaken. We'll move to Item 12. Are there city council reports that people would like to make? I'll begin with Councilmember Azavito.
Okay. On October 13, I attended the EBD Personnel Committee. We discussed commissioner compensation, and we decided to keep it the same. On October 16, I attended the EBD Commission Meeting. We discussed the Brown Act, and we discussed the PFAS, PFAS, sorry, PFAS Bill that was vetoed by Governor Newsom, and we discussed next steps to move forward on this. Those are my reports.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bowen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to share a few things. One, I attended the Cal State Cities Conference in Long Beach from October 7th to the 10th. One highlight was that I was elected to serve as the second VP of the East Bay Division Board of Cal Cities, and that represents cities across Alameda and Contra Costa counties, so really excited for that leadership role. I also want to share that I had attended VASAB's Community Health Fair, which was really wonderful. They were doing vaccinations and health screenings for community members without asking any questions and without any cost, and provided resources from many, many different organizations, including other organizations that are here in San Leandro. One of the things that we, I ended up having a very long conversation with Executive Director about that I wanted to share and then just kind of outlift for our, for potentially city staff or other council members as going forward. As you know, two out of five residents in San Leandro and one in three in Alameda County are A&amp;HPI, and Asian Americans Defending Justice recently told the group in Long Beach, actually, that the estimate right now is that 50 to 100 Southeast Asians and other A&amp;HPI folks are being detained on a weekly basis by immigration. And so just this last week, Alameda County Board of Supervisors allocated additional funding to help with services, but there was a gap in funding for an HPI-facing organizations to serve the community, and that's something that I think we should address as it comes up, and I'll continue to advocate for that. And then I also want to speak to an issue that has come up at many meetings during public comment and then has been reported. In January, I filed an HR complaint concerning inappropriate and bullying behavior by councilmembers Victor Aguilar Jr. and Fred Simon. It was not easy to do, and it has not been easy since. But I did it because I care about creating a safe, respectful, and functional environment where we can do all, where we can all do our jobs and serve the city effectively. Almost 10 months later, the investigation remains stalled. This prolonged delay has caused real harm to me, to staff who have witnessed the behavior, and the public's trust in how this council upholds accountability. In previous cases, such as the complaint and censure involving former city manager Francis Robustelli, the entire process was completed in six months. The fact this matter has dragged on far longer raises serious concerns about fairness, consistency, and whether this council holds itself to the same standards it expects of others. Across the country, we've seen the decay of civility and basic respect, and even physical violence in some cases in political spaces. We can and must do better here. San Leandro deserves leaders who model integrity, empathy, and accountability, not the division and dysfunction that have become far too common. There's no reason to think that the city's independent investigation is not completed, and I believe that the council now has the report. Those findings should be released immediately, and the council must act. It's incredibly uncomfortable and disappointing to have to publicly call out colleagues, but professionalism should not require silence or acceptance of harmful behavior. My professionalism does not mean that I accept being mistreated, and this council should not expect me or anyone to accept symbolic gestures in place of real action. I continue to do the work and show up every single week for the last 10 months because I care deeply about this city, but caring about the work also means insisting that we do it with integrity, fairness, and respect. That's why I've also requested a structured training series for the council and executive staff, covering respectful workplace conduct, conflict resolution, bias awareness, and how to recognize and respond to unhealthy dynamics. Our code of ethics outlines our values, but it doesn't yet teach us how to live them out in practice. I believe we can move from aspirational words to actionable standards that protect everyone and strengthen how we govern, because if we can't be honest with one another, if we can't name what's broken and work together to fix it, then we can't make things better. So tonight, I'm asking my colleagues, Mayor Gonzalez, councilmembers Azavito, Viveros Walton, and Bolt. I know you want to restore trust, get this council back on track, and focus on helping the city's residents. This is your opportunity to follow through on that. Finally, I am formally requesting disciplinary action regarding the conduct of councilmembers Aguilar and Simon in accordance with our administrative policy. This isn't about punishment, it's about doing what's right, moving us forward, and ensuring that everyone who serves here can do so in an environment that is safe, respectful, and free from toxic behavior. That, to me, is what accountability looks like, and that is what our community expects and deserves. And I will follow up with our city manager and city attorney if there's anything else I need to do in order to formally request that disciplinary action. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll go to Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Last week, Thursday, I attended the National Legacy Cities LGBT Kilo constituency group meeting, and as the immediate past president, we worked together to create our panel discussion and provide entertainment for our dinner. And also, we were working to make sure that we have partnered with the International Victory Fund to piece together our panel discussions and collaborations with the International Victory Fund in Washington, DC the first week of December. Thank you. That's my, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolt, please.
Yes, thank you. To Vice Mayor Bowen, it is a very difficult time. I wish we were moving forward and getting this resolved. It is taking longer than I anticipated. I wish we could come to a resolution tonight. Unfortunately, we haven't got there, and I do hear the comments, but I want to say to you that we are working in that direction. And I do believe staff is doing everything they can to advise us to make sure we are doing what we need to do to make sure the right outcome is present and real. And I don't want to kill myself over some type of, you know, closed-session conversation, so that I'll leave it right there, but please understand that we are trying to get this done. With that, the Veterans Commission did its Stand Down in Alameda County. A stand-down is an event where we bring as many veterans from across the county that are in need of services, whether it's medical, dental, psychiatric, housing, food support. And it was a well-attended event. We work really hard on this. We do it twice a year. We bring over 1,500 veterans in, not just from Alameda County, but from across the Bay Area. Most are from our county. Some of the services provided were, like I said, dental work, haircuts, food vouchers, a pantry to take food home, criminal services, or justice, I should say, justice services, where we bring in veterans that are facing some type of levy against them and get it resolved. And I want to say it was over 40 different issues were resolved that veterans were facing through county lawyers, judges, and administrators of the county justice system. So it was a good event. We will continue to do more. If anybody's interested, reach out to me. There are plenty of ways to volunteer for this, these types of events. And then lastly, I'd like to say that this Friday, we have a trunk-or-treat being held at Local Union DC 16 here in San Leandro on William Street, 2020 William Street. We're going to do it from 4:00 to 8:00. It's across the parking lot from 21st Amendment. It's a safe environment. I do believe there's going to be some food trucks out there, but it gives the kiddos the opportunity to try on the costume for the following week, and hopefully get ready for Halloween. It should be a fun and exciting event, and all are welcome, so please tell anybody you know, and come on out, get some candy, and that's it.
Thank you. Seeing no others at this point in time, I'll go just run down some things. Do you want to congratulate Palan's Martial Arts on a wonderful trunk-or-treat? I was glad to support that event. Over the last couple of weeks, I've spent time with Assembly Member Liz Ortega, talking about San Leandro's priorities and getting some perspective on the budget for the coming year. The budget's going to be another difficult budget year for the state of California, as currently anticipated. I anticipate to hear the same thing from Senator Grayson's staff this week. The governor's office was, met with them, and they were particularly interested in understanding what some of those big-picture priorities are and to understand where San Leandro sits vis-à-vis other cities in Alameda County. So it's good to provide the team an update on who we are and how we will continue making certain requests for funding. Talking about regional agencies for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, something to be mindful of is that there is growing interest in wood smoke, particularly coming from fireplaces as a carcinogen. There is significant evidence that particulate matter and harmful chemicals are emitted by wood smoke. There's significant encouragement to transition to other forms of heating. It's scientifically demonstrated that although wood fireplaces, wood-burning fireplaces are cute to look at, they're actually not only quite bad for the environment, but they really don't do an effective job of heating per unit of cost. Want to thank the team for so many events this weekend. The Halcyon Linear Park tree planting was just amazing. We had so many people out there, and the work was essentially done by like 9:30. It was amazing. People were saying, "What else can we do? What else can we do?" So there's energy, and I just want to make sure that we take advantage of whenever people show up that we have plenty of work for them. I do, I do want to say that even though we in San Leandro don't have a gun violence problem, I did attend a regional convening called by Oakland Mayor Barbara Lee, the executive director from the Brady Handgun, Handgun Violence Prevention Team in Washington, DC was out. It was particularly useful to spend time with other cities that are experiencing problems and to really provide moral support and to talk about how we can be communicating effectively to make sure that we're providing on a regional basis all the support that they need. Coming back to events in the city of San Leandro, so that was Friday. On Saturday, we also had here in the city of San Leandro a wonderful event supporting the development of ADUs by providing folks with answers to commonly asked questions. The Assessors Office was here, East Bay MUD was here, PG&E was here, many different organizations, ORLOMA was tabling as well, many different organizations so that potential ADU builders could ask those questions and get them answered. And so kudos to the team at the city of San Leandro. We had a lot of people there from the Economic Development Department, the ones that are coming to mind, Quikly Mike Jeffries, we had DES, and others from the team. I think we had four or five different people there supporting our community members. From that, at the library, we had hundreds of people show up for an emergency preparedness event at the library. And again, organized originally by Lena Tam, but we were there at her side, making sure that our county supervisor got A-plus service from the city of San Leandro. The parking lot was like a third full with folks that were tabling, ranging from Stanford Medicine to lots of other organizations to help support what was happening inside. So it was, it was really throughout the library. So thank you again to city staff for that type of supports, support. And then I'll close with just attendance at what I'm going to call some love rallies, where people came together in the city of Hayward yesterday to talk about the importance of standing up for what is right. I was there supporting my local mayor in the city of Hayward, supporting the city residents that showed up there, as well as people from Hayward. And then I came to the city of San Leandro's rally to, again, support our residents. It was by, by the click counter, over 1,000 different people showed up, and we had people coming from other cities and other unincorporated areas. So it was good to see so many people coming to the city of San Leandro to express unity against hate, because we have this banner in our chambers that says that we stand united against hate. And this week in particular is United Against Hate Week, and so my encouragement is that folks in San Leandro be extra kind this week, and that we really work to promote at like an A-plus level kindness, and to say, "San Leandro is a city where hate is not tolerated, hate is not welcome, hate does not belong in our city. Instead, we are a city where kindness matters and innovation flourishes." So with that, we are adjourned at 9:45.